The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, October 18th, 2018 is now called to order. Mr. Paulson, would you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudes?
Here.
Chair Kane?
Here. I would ask everyone stand and join Commissioner O'Donnell in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process. It was a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the planning commission conducting its business on behalf of the town council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the planning commission. Prior to a commission meeting, written comments concerning agenda items may be submitted to staff. They are always welcome and always helpful. At meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight, please complete a speaker card located on the back of the benches where you are seated. Turn the card into a staff member and please print your name clearly. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any reports tonight? Okay. So we come now to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any cards?
We do not.
All right. Then I'm going to move on. We move to the consent calendar. Items on consent may be acted upon by a single motion. But before the planning commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the public or of the commission may request that the item be removed. Tonight, we have one item on consent. Item one, approval of the minutes of the September 26th Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a request to pull the item or is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Badami?
I move to approve the consent item, which consists of the approval of the minutes from September 26th, 2018.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, aye, passes seven, two zip. We move into the public hearings portion of our meeting and consider item two, which is 15299 Los Gatos Boulevard, Architecture and Site Application S-18027 and Conditional Use Permit Application U-18006, requesting approval for the expansion of retail area in an existing automobile service station, Rotten Robbie, and exterior modifications on the property entered as owned CH. This is APN 424, 19047. The property owner and applicant is David Mordick of the Robinson Oil Company and the project planner is Ajak Khan. This matter is continued from the July 25th, August 22nd, and September 12th, 2018 Planning Commission hearings. May I see a show of hands from the commissioners who have visited the subject property? Do we have any disclosures from any of the commissioners? Mr. Khan, would you give us the staff report?
Sure. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The item before you was considered by the planning commission on July 25th, 2018. The commission continued the application with the direction that the proposal reflect recent high-quality projects that were built on Los Gatos Boulevard. The applicant has responded to the planning commission's direction, the revised plans, which include the following. Stone veneer was added to the exterior facades, exterior color changes, and new wooden gate to replace the existing chain link, gate for the trash enclosure. I also have an exhibit that I can pass around regarding the changes in color materials. And this concludes staff's presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
Could you pass the... Are there any questions for staff? All right. This is pretty much what is the attachments in the staff report, yes? Okay. So I'm opening the public portion of the public hearing and will give the applicant the opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. Who will be speaking for the applicant? I'll need a speaker's card, sir. I won't need it now, but please fill out one later.
Sure.
State your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Tom Robinson and my address is 365 Johnson Avenue, Los Gatos. Chair Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our proposed Rotten Robbie project. I also appreciate the staff support for the project. My name is Tom Robinson. I'm president of Robinson Oil. We're a fourth-generation company headquartered in Santa Clara. I've lived in Los Gatos on Johnson Avenue for over 30 years. We've owned and operated the Rotten Robbie for over 40 years. I'd like to review the scope of the project and discuss the changes that we've made since the July meeting. This gas station, like other gas stations in Los Gatos, is over 50 years old. This building was designed for automotive repairs. It has two lube bays, which have not been used for mechanical work for over 40 years. Currently, the lube bays are used to sell refreshment items out of reach-in coolers. The sales room is used to sell chips and snacks. The floor is concrete. The restroom is accessed from the outside of the building. The primary change to this facility is to replace the lube bay doors with a storefront. The current building is ADA compliant for an existing building. As part of the upgrade, ADA access will be improved. The restroom access will change from the outside to the inside. The inside store selling area will be upgraded, making it more attractive and efficient. Since the previous meeting, we've changed the finishes and the colors to enhance the look of the building. We've replaced the existing patent slump stone with stacked stone veneer. In fact... I'm making progress. In fact, hopefully it's showing. Yes, it is. I respectfully request your support for our proposal. This really is a very small project. We are not asking to change the building footprint. We wish the property was bigger and we could propose more, but we are constrained by what we have. Our goal is to make what we have better. Thank you and I appreciate any questions. Also, our architect Kurt Wagonneck is here to answer any questions if you had any questions. Do you want... I'll leave that up for you.
We do not.
We have no cards from the public. So the way this works, you get 10 minutes to make a presentation. The public, whoever comes up to speak gets three minutes. Then you get to have five minutes to rebut. Would you like to rebut anything you've heard tonight?
I further make your rebut what you say.
Well, let me see if, in that event, I'm still asking if there are questions for the speaker. All right, seeing none, thank you. I'm closing the public portion of the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have questions for staff, wish to comment on the application, or wish to make a motion. Commissioner Birch?
I want to just express appreciation in being heard during the last meeting with what we were looking for. I feel like the application in front of us, by using the stacked stone, the change in the color palette significantly softens, which is a gas station, and is much more reflective of the Los Gatos Boulevard. So I would support the application.
Thank you. I have a question. Commissioner O'Donnell, at our last hearing, went over the last hearing. You had concerns about an opportunity to upgrade. Do you feel that's been accomplished?
Yeah, I went out there again today.
Check your mic.
I went out again today and I think that the changes they're proposing are good changes. And I don't think there's much else they, I hate to say could do, but reasonably we could expect of them. So I'm satisfied with the changes.
Commissioner Hudes, did you want to comment on branding?
Well, I mean, when I looked at the property, I think that it's dominated by, you know, the brand itself. And I don't think that's the purview of the commission. So I think there's not really much that we could do with regard to the fundamental colors because they're consistent with the brand. So I think this one is somewhat driven by what it is. And I think there is an improvement to the architecture over what we saw last time in a small but significant way. And as Commissioner Birch stated, I think it's, we appreciate the applicant taking the feedback from the commission and thinking about that and making appropriate changes.
I agree with what's been said. Clearly, the applicant has made an attempt, has tried, and that's always appreciated. Commissioner Badami?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Why don't you make one?
So I move to approve Conditional Use Permit U-18006 and Architecture and Site Application S-18027, requesting a modification to an existing conditional use permit to expand the retail area of an automobile service station and approval for exterior modifications to a commercial building on property zoned CH. I can make the required findings per Exhibit 2, which will be findings for CEQA, the required findings for Conditional Use Permit, and the finding that it complies with the commercial design guidelines.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch?
I'll second.
All right, do we have discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, seven zero. Thank you, sir. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights regarding this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal the decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you. I'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is 720 Blossom Hill Road, Conditional Use Permit Application U-18008, requesting approval for a modification of an existing conditional use permit to Lenardi's Supermarket to allow wine and beer tasting on property zoned C1. This is APN 523-06054. Nope, 045. The property owner is the Rice Family Living Trust. The applicant is Lenardi's Supermarket and the project planner is Mr. Sean Mullin. May I see your hands of those who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures? Thank you. Mr. Mullin, will you give us your report, please?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request to modify an existing conditional use permit to allow wine and beer tasting at the Lenardi's Supermarket. The proposed wine and beer tasting would be located in an interior room currently used for storage. No exterior modifications or increase in floor area would occur as a result. In addition to town requirements, the proposed use would be regulated under a Type 86 license issued by the California Alcoholic Beverage Control. And staff is recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council based on the evidence and discussion in the provided staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Do we have questions from staff? Commissioner Birch?
Do we have any other grocery stores in town that do beer and wine tasting?
I'm having flashbacks to the new Safeway that might have been part of their planned development, but I don't know if they actually do it.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Seeing none, I will open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant the opportunity to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. I will need speaker cards, please. Thank you, sir. Would you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Ken Beroni. I'm the Wine and Beer Manager over at Lenardi's in Los Gatos. And here to discuss, hopefully, the approval of tasting wine and beer at our store. As it stands right now, it is, as mentioned, an area of the store that's currently used, a lot of just storage of wine. And we would like to go forward getting the approval to do tasting. Basically, as a way to educate the public and bring in local wineries to our store. And people can enjoy a taste and it'll be a minimum of, or maximum of, three one-ounce pours during a two-hour period. So I'm open to any questions you might have.
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm just curious. Was the question was, is there a similar use in Los Gatos? I can't think of one. But since you're in the business, is this going on, it sounds like a good idea, but I'm just wondering, is there any precedent for it that you're familiar with?
As far as in the town?
Well, not necessarily, anywhere.
Oh, yeah. I can think of and actually...
You can speak, but do give me a speaker card, please.
My name's Jesus Vazquez. I live at 962 Patricia Way in San Jose. I know Safeway on Hamilton and Meridian does tastings on weekends. If you go in, they have those little cups. They do spirits, beer, and wine. Zenardo's has a wine day on Wednesday where you could taste wine while you shop.
Also, the new Total Wine, familiar with it on Almeda Expressway, which is...
Yeah, which is a super-duper liquor store?
Yeah. I've been in there and they do have tastings.
So those are the ones that come to mind.
But as mentioned, it is a new precedent.
Thank you, I was just curious, that's all. I know Lenardi's. I know Mr. Beroni. We've had dealings in the past. I like Lenardi's. Everybody likes, I like your hiring policies in particular. What I don't understand, and I'll put this in a vernacular, why are you giving out free booze at 10 o'clock in the morning? I mean, your marketing guys must have come up with that, but I would have thought five to seven, six to, why so early?
Do you drink wine, sir?
What is this, the Supreme Court?
Well, I'm assuming you do, but in case you don't. When you walk down the wine aisle, it's slightly overwhelming to some that don't know much about it. So if you go in there, you get to taste something and you enjoy it, you're more likely to buy it than you are just if you haven't.
That's not my question and I'm not even sure it's in my purview. Why 10 o'clock in the morning?
Because those are typically when people are shopping. That's the busier time of the day at a grocery store.
All right. Other question. Commissioner Badami?
You have additional Lenardi locations throughout the valley. So do any of those other locations offer the wine tasting?
In Santa Clara, no. But up the peninsula, yes.
There's one in the peninsula and then the Danville Store also does tastings. They do Friday and Saturday evenings.
Do they draw a crowd? Is it popular? Is it crowded?
There are people that get to know, you know, our wine managers that will know when everything's going on. But besides that, yeah, it'll increase. When you put out the time that it's going to, there's going to be a tasting, you'll have people, you know, couples that get together, stop by, you know, want to taste something that they haven't had before, they've talked about. And then, yeah, so you do, you'll bring in more people. But like I say, we need to limit it to, you know, a couple hours at a time.
Thank you.
Would you go if we were doing, for example, Rhombauer Chardonnay tasting?
I might be admitting to something and I might have said Chair Kane.
I just use Rhombauer Chardonnay because it's the number one selling wine at that location.
And that's pre-tasting?
That's...
Rhombauer?
For you. I'm not saying we're doing, I'm just throwing it out there.
We can talk after the meeting.
Are you offering a gift?
I'm not bribing anybody. Don't accuse me of anything.
I just can't see sipping a tentacle. I've got to work. I can't go to work smelling like a Rhombauer.
It's, we're shooting for Saturdays and Sundays.
That makes more sense. Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up.
I did have the same question as Commissioner Badami. I think you answered it. Because I was on the commission when we approved the expansion of Lenardi's a few years ago. And one of the questions we had at that time was, is this in line with the overall Lenardi's strategy? And the current configuration of the store is with the bigger Lenardi's very similar to that. So it sounds like this is more of a trendsetter than the expansion was.
Trying, just trying to keep up the Joneses is what's going on.
Okay. So my other question was, I happen to have gone to the wine tasting at Whole Foods in Almeda. They do it there.
Yeah, Whole Foods does it too.
Yes. And not often, but I've been to it before and they do it in the afternoon. And so I wondered if you would consider putting it to after 12 noon.
Yeah, we're going to see how it goes. I mean, if everything gets approved, it'll be, you know, a stepping stone on our way to see when, what's going to be the best time but also limited to a couple hours at a time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Vice Chair Hudes?
So I think that any step that's made to make businesses more vibrant in town is very positive. And so I think that from my perspective, I don't really have a question about the timing, about the particular hours that you're proposing because you're the experts at that. But I did have a question and I don't know if we're going to get into this or not. But in your letter, you talk about a maximum pour of one ounce. And I think that that very well mitigates the possibility of, you know, overconsumption. But in your testimony, you mentioned a maximum of three pours of one ounce within two hours. Is that correct? Okay. So it's not, I don't see it in the conditions of approval. So I, it is in your letter, but I don't know that it's in the condition. So I don't know whether other commissioners might want to include something like that. But I'd like to get your opinion about that as to whether that were specified as well, whether you would have a problem with that. Specifying...
Three one-ounce pours is what's allowed by the ABC.
Right. Okay, so you're in compliance with the ABC.
Everything we do is based on ABC laws because they run the show.
Okay. Well, we don't need to rewrite those rules either.
So that's the max you're allowed to pour without a charge and then without reaching for a permit to have a restaurant bar, whatever that number is, an 80 whatever license.
Okay, and clearly, the without a charge, I don't know if that's in the conditions either.
Yeah, it's without a charge.
It's not. Okay. So again, we might get into a discussion about whether we need to include that in order to...
Again, that's ABC thing. So if we do charge, we're considered a bar?
Yes.
So then we'd have to apply for a bar license?
Right.
And I'm pretty sure you guys would not allow us to put a bar in Lenardi's.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
But I have seen that before up in...
Yeah, Whole Foods.
Safeway up in Oregon.
Has a bar?
Has a bar. They don't sell alcohol in the store or wine, one or the other, but then you could go in there and drink.
The Whole Foods on the Alameda and the one on Blossom Hill both have a tasting bar. You could buy wine and beer in the store and go consume in that area. And they have a bar where they pour beer and wine.
In the 1950s, my father was a bartender in the equivalent of a Target and the men went to there.
I don't even think that far back. I remember my dad drinking at Ford's, Ford's store in Wattsville when we were kids. We'd go shopping, my mom would take a shopping, my dad would go to the little restaurant area. Yeah, on Sundays after church, right? You did. So not that far back in the 50s. Two 80s.
How old were you?
I was born in 81, so like three, four, right? Five.
Do we have other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public portion of the public hearing to see if anyone wants to speak. Do we have any cards? So you now have five minutes to rebut anything you heard.
I have a question about the hour. So our applications were 10 to 2. If we wanted to go in the afternoon, as you guys have suggested, would we need to reapply to you guys or how does it work?
No, you can do it right now.
Okay, can we expand it to like, I don't know, 8:00 PM, 7:00 PM?
From 6:00 to 8:00?
Well, it would all depend, right? We'd still only do it for two hours, whether we started at four, do it four to six, six to eight.
I just think the later the better.
We could do that. And the plan was, the idea is, is to get like an A-frame chalkboard, nice little drawing. You know, this Thursday, come taste, again, I'll use Rhombauer, you know, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You know, so maybe when you guys get done with...
6:00 to 8:00 PM is a good idea. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Perhaps what we could do, and this is all very simple, and I don't see anything wrong with it all, but you've started by suggesting a time. If you would like to experiment a little bit, I suppose what we could do is put a time limit, let them find out what they think the best time is. We're not in a position, nor are we requested or required or authorized, to tell you how to run your business. You want to do it from ten to two, that's fine, but if you decide that you'd like to test the market a little bit, I would suggest that we give them a chance to experiment with ten to two, and then some other similar time, not later than, put a number in it, and then at the end of thirty, sixty, ninety, is whatever it is, they would tell the staff what day they're going to stay with, simply so we'll know what is approved. So, if anybody else would find that acceptable, I'm just trying to help the applicant, and that might be helpful.
Commissioner Badami.
If they were to find that acceptable, what other timeframe would you like?
So, I'm assuming during the week, six to eight, or five to seven would work, that when people go grocery shopping, but on weekends, typically Saturday afternoon at a grocery store, not very busy. People are doing family things, so they typically shop in the morning, maybe for an afternoon barbecue, or family dinner, X, Y, Z reasons, whatever normal people do on a Saturday afternoon is why we shop for those hours for the weekends.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you.
I had a suggestion. The current terms and conditions say it would be wine and beer tasting events would occur no more than three times a week between the hours of ten and two. If you just said that they would occur no more than three times a week with a maximum amount of time of no more than two hours at each tasting...
That's perfect. I mean, I think you guys are the best judge of that, and I'm sure your judgment and your
customers would tell you not to do it at eight in the morning.
You guys are the experts. We're just grocers.
So, that's a suggestion I have, to change the terms and conditions to no more than two hours per tasting, and then not specify what the hours are, because, like I said, your customers probably are going to say not at eight in the morning, you know, like that.
You're going to have a group that... Why aren't you having it when I'm there shopping, and the group that's like, wait till later when I get off work, because you have a mix of people, so...
Yeah. Let's change that.
If it's acceptable to the other commissioner.
What I'm saying, Commissioners, and I'm beating around the bush, is, Commissioner O'Donnell, the early hours just concern me about kids, and the later, the likely, the less kids, school kids. You're going to ID people, I suppose.
You do have the ABC rules to comply with, and I'm not really concerned about that, because that is something that we're not experts in, and the ABC...
I'm enlarging upon that provision that says for the welfare, the good of the people or something, you know, item number four.
Well, I think it's less likely that ten o'clock in the morning is going to have a problem with wine than six o'clock in the evening, but I'm in favor of what was just said, two hours, any time between, let's say, ten in the morning and whatever time you suggested, six or seven, or whatever it is, eight o'clock at night, and then they can pick the time, but it's two consecutive hours, so it isn't ten minutes here and fifteen minutes there. They'll pick the time, and they can vary it, so like, if the weekend, you want one time or another. The only thing I would defer to staff on is, if we make it, and it sounds good to do the way it was suggested, it may make it a little difficult to figure out whether they're complying, because it's so open, but that's not really our problem. If it's staff's problem, staff can say so.
Commissioner Birch.
I also feel quite confident that, being a local store with local family owners and everything, they're not going to want people over-drinking at ten AM. That would just look bad for business, so I support what Commissioner Hanson has said and allow them to figure out what their clientele wants. I think it's a perfectly respectable request.
Commissioner Badami.
I would also support the idea that Commissioner Hanson had as well, and as far as the earlier hours with the drinking, I mean, on the plus side is, you have less traffic, less commuters, so if you do have somebody that can't handle one ounce of Rhombauer and happen to leave the store, there's less likely that three ounces.
Three ounces.
Okay. Okay.
Then you go to the frozen food section, you come back, get three more. Then you go to vegetables.
No, it's max three. You can't come back. That would lose all ounces.
Well, I would support Commissioner Hanson's idea. I thought that was excellent.
In terms of managing the question, the staff report said there would be a Lenardi's employee present during this period, and in the materials you submitted, you said there would be a store employee and a representative of what was being sampled. So, will there be two?
I do believe it's "or."
No, it's "and." So, there will be a store manager available at all times?
Store man, yeah.
Right?
So, you won't leave the wine rep in there by him or herself?
Yes. Like, it could be me pouring the wine, and Ken manning the, you know, the store and regulating, so it'll be, there will be multiple people in charge. It's not just one person on their own.
Okay.
Sometimes three people.
Someone had your hand up. Commissioner Genov.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that the two-hour window does effectively limit your repeat possibility, so that's a really, really smart limitation.
And if you're spending more than two hours in Lenardi's, I mean, something's going on, right? Like, I mean, we do it, but yeah, but we get paid for it.
Anything else? I have one other comment. Commissioner Hanson brought up the original CUP. She was present, I was present. In your conditions of approval, I think I got the reason number eight is in here, rear of the building. The rear of the building shall be kept clean and free of litter and storage, because at that time, back in 2015, I circled the building, and the back was an absolute mess, so I put this one in here. It's in the new one, and I was not able to get to the store today. I took an injury, but what's the back of the building look like?
It's clean, organized.
Night and day compared to what it was.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Then I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing, and I will look to my commissioners for discussion, questions of staff, or a motion. Commissioner Hanson.
If there aren't any questions, I would be ready to make a motion. So...
Commissioner O'Donnell says you can make your motion.
Okay, go ahead. So, my motion is to recommend to Town Council that we approve, that they approve the Conditional Use Permit Application U-18-008 to allow beer and wine and beer tasting on property zone C1, APN 523-06-045, and I can make the findings of SEQA, and I can also make the findings for Conditional Use Permit as stated in Exhibit Two, and would recommend the conditions of approval in Exhibit Three with the change to item number five that we discussed with the maximum amount of time being two hours and not specifying which hours they are.
Perfect.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Birch.
I will second the motion.
Do we have discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Passage seven to zero. And by the way, what I said about being a good neighbor and your hiring policy, I'd like to underscore that. It's a well-known fact what you do, and it's much appreciated.
I think we'll pass that along. Thank you.
Given that we're making a recommendation to council, Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights at this point?
There are not.
Thank you. So, I'm going to move to other business. Are there any comments or questions concerning commission matters? Seeing none, Item Four on the agenda is report from the Director of Community Development. Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank the Planning Commissioners for attending the joint session with the council for the kickoff of the general plan update, and we'll also be having a community workshop on October 17th at 6:30 PM at the JCC. So, if you have folks that might be interested, definitely pass that along.
What was the date?
October 17th.
Mr. Paulson, we discussed earlier an EIR of some volume that may come up at the next hearing or the subsequent hearing, and you told me something I wasn't familiar with, and I wanted to share it with the commission. When we take this EIR to the next meeting or the one after, what is our responsibility concerning the document? It's voluminous, I mean, what happens?
The purpose of this first meeting is to just accept comments from the public, so you won't be taking any action on either the EIR or the project itself. It's strictly an opportunity that's required by SEQA to allow for public comment before Planning Commission body.
Thank you. Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.